Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, October 5th, 2020. Please stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening. I'd like to ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. In memory of former Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jerry Marcus, 1981 to 1989, and cafeteria worker Mary Rich, 1953 to 1992, Church Street and Eastview Schools. Thank you.
I just wanted to just take a point of personal privilege here and just welcome to everyone who's on Zoom with us, but also welcome everyone who's here at the high school with us. We're in new territories every day, new ways of doing things, so we just appreciate your patience and your support. Thank you and welcome. Next, we'll move to public participation. Will there be any public participation? I will read for the record, "The public is invited to address the Board and Superintendent on any matter relating to the White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administrators, or others. The administration will be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature." Will we have any public participation tonight?
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, Tara Weiss, 8 Pine Brook Drive, White Plains, New York, 10605. I'd like to make public comments tonight. I have a seventh grader at Highlands Middle School. He attends school on Thursday. I've spoken to Mr. Satafor multiple times. He's been nothing but gracious, very, very responsive. This is not on him, not on the teachers. I've asked for multiple responses from Dr. Ricka. He has max three students in his classes. He's had one student in a class as of last week. The second week, two students showed in those three classes. In all eight periods, the maximum number of students he has is three. I just want to know, is there a plan by the district? I know some of the students have elected fully remote, but some of them are just not showing up as of two weeks. We'll see what happens this week. What's the plan and the timing from the district as to when they're going to reassess and allow students possibly to come in two days? It seems to me that the number of students attending on any given day is very small, such that even with proper distancing and all of your safety rules, the kids at Highlands and possibly the high school, I don't know, that situation could be coming in at least two days. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Will we have any more public participation?
Thank you very much for your comment, Ms. Weiss. We are monitoring the attendance of the children every day. As you mentioned, it does make it difficult to get a sense of exactly how many students are going to be in a class on a given day. And then to add to that the complication that because our children are following their schedules, they might have fewer students in one particular class, but then for the remainder of their academic day, they might be back up to the number of students who should have been in or who were planned to be in their classes on a given day. So the district is monitoring all of that information, and if we're able to bring more students back, we certainly will. As you made mention, you know, we are only in our third, really, third week of hybrid learning. As you know, even in our very first week of hybrid learning, we were working very diligently throughout the district to track down suspected cases of COVID-19 and identified cases of COVID-19. So it is a very real moving target each day. What I can tell you is that the reopening committee and the district remain committed to bringing as many children back on a daily basis as humanly possible, making sure that at the same time, we're adhering to all the health, safety requirements and guidelines. We absolutely do understand that moms and dads and guardians really want to see their children back in the facilities as often as possible, and so do we. So I will, I'll, I will tell you, we're going to keep looking at it. The reopening committee continues to explore possible ways to bring more children back into the facilities. But it is really important to recognize, and I know not everybody necessarily sees this, but on a daily basis, we are literally tracking down fevers. We're tracking down symptoms and making sure that individuals within the school district are not either COVID-19 positive or potentially have been exposed to COVID-19. So I do very much appreciate the comments, and we'll continue to work hard to meet that, to meet that challenge.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ricka. I just give you one topic on our agenda. This is our School Board Recognition Week. And I understand we have Jennifer Hammond King, our Cara Lyons, and Adele Hirsenberg that you would all like to say something, as well as Gina Northfleet and Gina Buck. So can we start with Jennifer Hammond King?
Yes, that would be wonderful. Thank you. On behalf of the Administrators Association of the White Plains School District, we want to thank the Board and appreciate you during this time of School Board appreciation. We absolutely appreciate all that you do to support our work, particularly with your excellent financial stewardship of the district, which allows us to have many programs, activities, and instructional opportunities for our students, not only for their core activities, but also for the many myriad enrichment activities and sports activities that are available for our students. Thank you also for your constant participation and input in our many district curriculum committees and other leadership committees. We know that you all have jobs outside of what you do for the school board, but you would actually not know it because the amount of times that we see you participating with us and, and working with us, you are a very hands-on board, and we really very much appreciate that collaboration. You support the administrators in this district to be able to do the work of moving this, this work forward for our students. And for all of those things, we really very much appreciate your efforts. So thank you.
Thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. Thank you so much for those kind words. Cara?
Hi there. So I'd like to echo Jennifer's statements on behalf of the association. Serving as a trustee on a school board is an altruistic public service, and the responsibility of ensuring a safe learning environment for students and staff is not easy. Doing so during a pandemic and a fiscal crisis is a singular experience. The volume of hours you spend listening, meeting, emailing, and discussing are done quietly and behind the scenes. And you do it because you care about the kids of White Plains and the community. So thank you for all of it. We're grateful for your encouragement, your dedication, and open line of communication. Rose Marie Eller, Kane Letizia, Charlie Norris, Cheryl Brady, Randy Stein, Rose Lovich, and Jim Ricky, your work allows us to do our work. We're grateful. You are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so, so much. We, we appreciate, we appreciate our partnership and your kind words, too. Ms. Adele Hirsenberg?
Thank you. Tough acts to follow. While some of you may know, and some of you may not, that I am known for my back-to-school speeches being very short and sweet, like me. So in the spirit of that, I would just like to say thank you. We are also appreciative of all that you have done to support our CSCA members, and please know that it does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hirsenberg. Just know that this Board, we treasure all of our partnerships, and it's certainly an honor to partner with you all for the veteran of our school district.
I wish you could all see us smile.
Yes, we are smiling. We are smiling. Gina? Ms. Northfleet?
Yeah, just project if you don't mind.
So on behalf of the White Plains PTA Council, I'm Gina Northfleet. Jessica Buck is our newly-incoming co-president. First of all, shout out to our world's teachers today, White Plains teachers. So we are here to be on the State Board of Education meeting to offer our sincere thanks for the work of Gina Northfleet, that does support the White Plains Public School District. The vision of the current district to be a plan is to inspire, to unlock, to create the potential of each student every day with its own dedication that helps make the top of our district to achieve those aspirations and to ensure and help keep a safe learning environment for our kids and also for our family. The only thing that I'd like to come out of this team and here at White Plains is to really go ahead and listen to everybody, and to remember that we're all the votes that take each of you away from the beginning, that the lives of our students, the success of our students, we have to change this board on the White Plains PTA, PTA and our fellow students, blah, 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 blah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We do appreciate our PTA Council. And as I have always said, there's no PTA Council that can touch ours. You guys are awesome, and your reputation speaks for itself. So we thank you for all you do and for your continued partnership. I will say, hopefully, on behalf of all of us, that all of you are special to us. All of you are our partners because we're working for the greater good. We're working for something that's bigger than ourselves, for our future. So we do appreciate our partnerships. We remain open and available and approachable for whatever we can do, not only to make what you do better, but for the lives of our students and our staff. Thank you all. So next, now I think I'm back in sync with the schedule, with the agenda. Next, we'll have our superintendent's report. Dr. Ricka?
Thank you, Madam President. I also just wanted to see, Mr. Geiger, are you up and running now?
Can you hear me?
I sure can. All right.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the technical delay. I want to say good evening to Dr. Ricka and members of the Board of Education, and thank you all, especially as you've all been honored so much tonight for the many hours of planning and pivoting over the past hectic months to keep providing a quality educational experience for all of the students in White Plains. And thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk about Jerry Marcus, who passed away recently, as you mentioned earlier, at the age of 87. Jerry was the 14th Superintendent of Schools in White Plains. He guided the district with a steady hand from 1981 to 1989. I had the honor to serve on the school board at that time and to work closely with Jerry for five years. Jerry would, I think, have responded well to the current pandemic-driven situation. He welcomed a good challenge. I think Jerry's tenure may best be remembered for advocating and implementing pioneering and courageous plans for racial integration programs and parent choice in White Plains. The basic structure of those plans remain to this day. And the series of actions Jerry initiated also led to significant facility expansions and upgrades at our elementary schools and Highlands School in the early 1990s. Jerry's leadership and educational acumen were widely recognized. He was twice named one of the top 100 educational executives in North America by the National School Boards Association, and he was handpicked by the New York State Education Commissioner to help review education practices in the state. Jerry was Superintendent of Schools in Franklin, Massachusetts before arriving in White Plains. He moved into the Highlands neighborhood, and he and his family became active members of the community, wife Anne and many civic organizations, and Alan and Lisa as students in the White Plains Public Schools. Even after Jerry moved on to be Superintendent in Ridgefield, Connecticut, he remained a supporter, donating generously to the Friends of White Plains Public Schools over the years. Jerry was also a perceptive evaluator of talent and made excellent personnel decisions. For instance, he hired Saul Janowski as a special assistant, and Dr. Janowski went on to lead the district as Superintendent for 12 years after Jerry departed. And while Jerry was Superintendent, the White Plains School Board made a great decision, hired a new clerk, Michelle Schoenfeld, whose positive impact on the district remains to this day. Jerry was always fair, set high expectations for himself and the district, and was focused on what was best for students. His legacy, both here and elsewhere, are the thousands of students who benefited from his leadership over the years. My deepest sympathy is to Jerry's family and his many friends. May his memory be a blessing. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that heartfelt statement, and we are very appreciative of the foundation that he has laid for us. Thank you so much. I'd like to just step back for one more minute to have any announcements from any Board members?
Rosemary, I just have two.
Sure.
I just wanted to highlight the Fine Art Department in the district. They recently sent home some fine art, some home art kits for students so they can participate in art activities while learning remotely. It was a great little packet of some construction paper, pencils, and colored pencils so our kids can engage in the learning and participate in the art activity that's going on in the classroom as well while they're home. I also wanted to just say that I attended the White Plains Youth Bureau in partnership with the White Plains Schools, Dads Bring Your Child to School Day, which was not canceled, thankfully, but did occur virtually like many things this year. And it was great to see so many people and participate in that and the fact that that did occur. And to echo Gina, just to say Happy World Teachers' Day, and this year, I think that gets extended to parents as well after our spring. So congratulations to all the teachers. But that is it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just, I wanted to, Kane said it, Gina did as well, but today is World Teachers' Day. And, you know, I've been, I think this is my 15th year sitting in this seat and 27th year volunteering in the schools. And the passion, the professionalism, and the dedication that I've always observed from our teachers and as well as the non-teaching staff and administrators has always been just remarkable. But at this time, when teachers really want to be with their students, that's one of the reasons why so many of these people go into this profession, and it is a profession, and they can't be in the way that we have in the past. So to watch them trying to deliver to the educational and social, emotional needs of the kids, as well as mastering new technologies, it's really remarkable thing to observe behind the scenes. And I just want to thank them for what they do every single day for our kids, but particularly now when they can't be with the kids sometimes that they really want to be with. So on behalf of the Board, thank you to all of the staff and particularly the teachers in our school district.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a couple of items to mention. I did attend the first PTA Council meeting for this year. And as I said before, there's no PTA Council better than the one that we have here in White Plains. I just wanted to shout out to James Dean, the outgoing PTA Council co-president, and just express our appreciation for the work that he's done and being a wonderful partner. I welcome Jessica Buck. I've seen you for a few years. You're, you're awesome. You're wonderful. You'll be a wonderful co-president. And to Gina, hello again. We just appreciate all you do, and we look forward to your, your dynamic duo and your superpowers to make everything all good. Welcome. I did have opportunity to attend the Youth Bureau meeting and just really wanted to express that their partnership with our schools remains. And they are always going to be there for our kids, and they're looking for ways to provide additional childcare. So I thought that was worth mentioning. Also, I was at the White Plains High School Guidance Meeting, the first high school PTA meeting, and it was awesome. It was a Zoom, and it just went flawlessly. And that's it for me.
I'll just mention, the open houses, I understand, have been going really well at the various schools. I think Eastview is this Wednesday, Highlands is next Wednesday. I had the pleasure of attending Church Street's Open House and seeing up close and personal how our teachers are interacting with our families. And again, all the tremendous hard work that they are undertaking to teach our children, to keep them engaged, to help families, to help parents, our administrators, all our staff. So thank you to everyone.
If I could jump in as well, certainly, we want to acknowledge the hard work of our teachers and all of our educators. And being married to a teacher every day is World Teacher Day in my house. So it's just another day in our house. But again, all kidding aside, it's a difficult job, and this year, it's even more difficult, certainly. I know a lot, I know a lot of teachers are spending a lot more time than they have in quite some time reworking how they do their job and wanting to make that connection with their students because they care so much about what they do and their, and their professionals in what they do. And witnessing it firsthand, it's, it's really something else to, to see that happen. And it's important for folks to know that people are really working that hard to make sure the students are getting that education that they deserve, and they're, they're working, they're really working their, their tails off, and that's really terrific. Being the parent of two high school students this year, from my little focus group, I can tell you, there, there is certainly a lot of work going on, a lot of professionalism. There's really not a lot of noise in my house between the two sisters when school is ongoing, other than in between periods. People are really engaged in what they're doing, and it's important to, to know and for folks to know that that is what's happening. And certainly, this is new for everybody, and there's certain frustrations. And I think people have come out and they, they share their frustrations and they talk to us, and, and I think that's normal. And I think some of those things are being worked on by Dr. Ricka and the administration, and they hear those things. And sometimes the easy answer isn't always as easy as it seems. Certainly, as a parent of a Monday grouping of students, I feel that we're terribly slighted by holidays. And, and I'm sure people who have Tuesdays or Thursdays or Fridays feel, feel something individual about their day as well. But those are all things that I know that the administration listens to and takes to heart, and they want to work on that because really, like, like Charlie said, people get into this business to be with students, not to, not to be near students. And they, they want to see their students. They want to, they want to teach them. They want to watch them grow. And it's just certainly a lot more work doing this. As a parent, you know, we're getting a lot, we're getting a lot of emails, a lot of information, day in and day out, and it's, it's tough to keep up with that, certainly. I find that challenge, and I know it's really all in an effort to make sure we're as informed as we can be, and I, and I really do appreciate that. And it's important that, that I think we, we take it as that, that the school district really wants to make us informed in what's, what's happening. And it just, it's a double-down effort. It's, it's harder as a parent now, too. We've got to make sure we're doing our jobs. We've got our students at home, and it's, it's a really, it's a really unique time, to say the least. I think it's really an understatement. And just want to, again, recognize, go back to recognize the educators and all the hard work that they do. And we're going to get through this, and it's, it's not ideal now, but as we lead our ways through it, we're going to find, we're going to find a good place at the end of this.
Thank you. So now I think, Dr. Ricka, we're to you. And just again, on behalf of all of us, as you can tell, we deeply appreciate all of our, our teachers and staff for what you do, and as well as all the parents for what you, you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, President Eller. At this time, I'd like to just take a moment to introduce Dr. Ann Vicaro Teich, who will introduce this evening's presenter from our audit company. Dr. Teich?
Hi, we have with us our external auditors, Naraki Smith and Dave Teller, who's the engagement partner. The firm was, is here to provide a summary of the year-end financial statement for June 30th, 2020. They did do a very comprehensive presentation with the Audit Committee on September 21st. And, you know, I just want to say how much we appreciate the collaboration with the firm. This is not an easy time to be doing an audit and doing it remotely, so we are very appreciative. Everyone was able to get everything done in a timely manner. So, Dave, I think you're here.
Yes.
All right. Take it away.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate everyone joining this evening. I, I think I have a brief presentation I'll go through, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I think just echoing Ann's comments, obviously, this year was an unprecedented year for, for many, but for us to perform an audit engagement, which usually, some of you may know that it's, it's kind of a hands-on type of a job, and to be able to work with the business office. And kind of, we collaborated to make it almost like a hybrid approach where we were able to conduct work onsite, sometimes with limited personnel, but then really do the line share of our work remotely. And to still be able to keep the timeframe is just, from what I've been saying to Ann, is just, is truly remarkable, and that really speaks volumes of the business office. And we do appreciate the relationship we have together with them and, and just really all the hard work that goes behind the scenes by both Ann and by Marcy and everybody else within the business office, them coordinating all of our procedures, as well as to, to speak with other individuals throughout the district, and them making the time to, to facilitate that. It was tremendous, so we do thank you for all of that. Again, I'll just kind of go through briefly, a little bit of the audit and what we did. First, my firm, Naraki Smith, was contracted by the district to perform the audit of the general purpose financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2020. We also performed the single audit of the federal award programs administered through the district for the fiscal year-end, June 30th, 2020, and performed the audit of the extra classroom activity funds as well. I mentioned that our field work was kind of a hybrid approach, so it was a little bit different this year than last. But again, we were able to perform all of our procedures to the satisfaction of, of us, and we found there to be no issues in the internal control structure of the, of the district. So there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the internal controls as we, as we reviewed them, as well as we had no year, no current year comments or recommendations for the district to improve upon those controls there at the district. So that's a very strong indication of how well the, the district is, is managed on a day-to-day basis. As Ann said, we did meet with the Audit Committee on September 21st to perform a detailed review of these financial statements with them at that time. And the district did file all of its state reports and its financial statements on time with the New York State Comptroller's Office and Education Department. So again, that was another big thing I wanted to make sure I got across to everybody. Then just a little bit about the financials themselves. They were, the audit report was a clean and unmodified opinion, which means that the audit was conducted in accordance with U.S. generally-accepted auditing standards and that the financial statements are presented in accordance with U.S. generally-accepted accounting principles. For the general fund for the year, we had a positive change in the general fund fund balance at the end of the year. The district remained within all allowable limits for the New York State tax cap, as well as the fund balance limitations that are put forth by the State Comptroller's Office. At the end of the year, the district was in a solid financial position to move forward, but I've But obviously with the way the last year ended and this year has begun, there are obviously significant challenges ahead. I think that the administration of the district has definitely positioned itself in a positive light to move forward and hopefully be able to curtail any negative effects that the pandemic will have on the school district on a, on a long-term basis. At the end of the year, the capital assets, net of any depreciation charges, charges totaled about $162.3 million. That's all the district's buildings and furniture, equipment, things of that nature. For the current year, the district invested in capital projects throughout the district of a little over $7.3 million. For the current year, the district paid down its bonds outstanding of $64.6 million by $6 million, $6.1 million during the current year, as well as reducing its payments on its energy performance contract by $765,000 to a total of a little, a little over $5 million. And then the last thing was looking at the budget to actual, the district continued to manage its budget very well. And especially in light of what happened towards the end of the year with the, the, the school closure for in-school instruction, obviously. So a lot of the expenditures towards the end of the year came below budget, which is what's going to be carried forward to help the district in the current fiscal year manage the necessary resources it, it's going to entail to, to continue to operate efficiently for the students and, and everything. So. That was kind of just a, a brief presentation of the financial statements. Again, I hope that you could take away that on our, in our position, the district is in a very solid financial picture moving forward. And the business office is truly working in, under incredible circumstances, is really working at a very high level and continues to do so on a day-to-day basis. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the board members may have or, or give you any more insight that I could this evening.
Thank you. I mean, with this was discussed at Audit Committee. So Dr. Stein, myself, and Dr. Lutizia, we've, we've heard this once before. Again, thanks to Ann and the business office. And thank you. Thank you to our external auditors.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening and be well, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And thank you, Ann and, and everybody. Marcy, I see you there as well. And everybody in the business office for all the great work that you continue to do. It really was a tremendous effort this year. We had a lot of different things going on. So it's fantastic to be able to come through an unqualified audit and continue to remain in the strong fiscal position that we have been over the years. We've always taken a very conservative approach to our, our finances. And we feel like this will continue to set us up for any potential challenges that we might face in the future. So thanks again, Ann. Congratulations, David. Thanks for everything and we'll see you soon. The remainder of my report is going to be pretty brief this evening, Madam President. First and foremost, I'd like to thank Westchester Medical Center. Westchester Medical Center just donated to us masks and sanitizers that were distributed throughout the district. And we received really nice correspondence. Dear Dr. Ricka, thank you for the amazing work your district is doing. Our community is fortunate to have you and your team of leaders, teachers and students as friends and partners. One thing we've learned through this pandemic is that we're stronger together. Best wishes for a safe and healthy school year. Best regards, Lisa Cheshire. So very, very fortunate to have a great partnership and they're, they're a fantastic organization. It was also Custodian Appreciation Day last week. So thanks so much. And Mr. Stefanielli is here with us. And it doesn't, doesn't go a day without having to thank and wanting to thank and being grateful to everybody in the maintenance and, and operations department. So thanks, Frank, and thanks to everybody. It's also Principal Appreciation Month. So thank you to all of our building leaders for all of your efforts to support our children and our families and our faculty and staff members. Again, you know, very challenging times, but we do have a dedicated group of leaders who are working diligently every day to do their best to serve our community. And board appreciation without a doubt. And there was a lot said about that already this evening. But from my perspective, I do also want to offer my thanks and appreciation. Maybe the only one who knows how many hours you put into this job other than your spouses is me. So I do appreciate how, how you're always available to us. And that's really 24/7. Especially these days. So thank you.
Joe, can you back up? Principals get a month? Is that what you just said?
Principals get an entire month.
And we just got a week? Is that?
Dr. Lutizia, I have a long list of appreciations here and none of them are superintendent. I'd also like to, to, to share that tomorrow is Coaches Appreciation Day. And more than ever, I think we, we know how dedicated our coaches are to our student athletes and how important they are to ensuring healthy development and, and strong social, emotional wellbeing. So congratulations, coaches, and we absolutely appreciate you. Oh, and happy birthday, Mrs. Eller.
Thank you.
Yes, happy, happy birthday, Rosemarie. Hope you had a wonderful day. And of course, International Teachers' Day and really every day should be Teachers' Day. And that's almost like Mother's Day. That's really important that we continue to recognize that the, the work that our faculty and staff members are doing every day, this is all new. And I read an article that said, you know, remote learning isn't anything new during the polio pandemic. There was listen and learn by the radio. Yeah, well, that's great. Listen and learn by the radio. Well, you don't ask the radio questions. And if you did, you certainly weren't going to get an answer back. This is much different than listen and learn by radio. This is fully interactive. This is fully integrative. And it's, it's fully a classroom environment, both physical person and, and remote. And to see it done is really an amazing feat. So congratulations and thank you to all of our teachers. Hispanic Heritage Month is taking place right now. And it is important that we recognize all the wonderful contributions that all of our Hispanic brothers and sisters are putting forward today and have put forward in the past. And you know, we do celebrate these months, but it's important to recognize that, that the celebration continues all year long. So we thank everybody for participating in, in the celebration this month. As far as an update for our student liaisons, we will be having student liaisons this year. Principal Martinez is, is working right now with the GO and we're going to have a meeting shortly. And we'll be meeting with our new representatives who will be zooming in with, with us in the near future. So I'm excited about that. What can I say about the PTA that hasn't already been said, except I am so grateful. Congratulations, of course, to Ms. Buck and, and Ms. Norfleet. And thanks, a huge thanks to Mr. Dean. It has been a tremendous pleasure to work alongside James. And I'm really looking forward to working alongside, continuing to work with Gina and, and working alongside with Jessica. Although I've worked a lot with Mrs. Buck on the, the recess revolution. And we were able to make some serious and significant headway because of her dedication. So I know she's going to bring that very same love and passion to this role. I do have beautiful certificates for you that I'll give you at the end of the evening. That's from County Executive Vladimir from last week. So congratulations again. Our District Equity Committee is moving forward with the work. We have a meeting this Thursday. We know that some folks who were part of the District Equity Committee have difficulty or going to have difficulty. So that's okay. And we're going to continue to move forward with this work and we'll, we'll share out all of the efforts of the committee. And I am grateful to everybody who continues to put so much effort into making sure that our district is doing everything possible to provide and live our mission and everything that we do and provide complete and total access and opportunity and equity in all that we do. The Westchester Children's Association is also focusing on equity this year, particularly as we are in a remote or hybrid learning environment. And the importance of making sure that children everywhere have access to what they need to be able to gain entry into their instructional world. And that is going to be an important part of the Westchester Children's Association's work this year, and I'm happy to be part of it. The District Reopening Committee also continues its work. And I am grateful to all the parents and guardians who reach out to us and share their recommendations and their thoughts and their experiences. We do bring them all to the reopening committee and the reopening committee considers everything. I said this this afternoon, without this group of folks working since last April, really, I can't even imagine where we would be. This afternoon, we were, we were working with another school district who was looking and having difficulty and looking to be able to replicate some of the things that we're doing here in White Plains. And you know, I said, I'm going to tell you right now about 45 people on the reopening committee. And if it wasn't for all of, all of them, we, we wouldn't be where we are. So it's a work in progress. But what's really important to remember is that what we're doing today is not what we're going to necessarily be doing two weeks from now. And that's something that I think is so hard for us as parents and teachers and students to recognize is that it truly is a day-to-day, sometimes hour-to-hour situation. And, and we're going to continue to monitor. We're going to continue to improve and we'll adjust as we can to be able to serve as many children every day as possible. I just, I also have to say in terms of faculty and staff members, we're so appreciative for all of their hard work. And you know, I don't think you can say thank you enough. I, I always used to say there are two things that people don't say enough. It's I love you and thank you. And I'm going to keep saying thank you as, as, as often as possible to everybody who's working so hard throughout the district. Budget planning is, is, it's here for the 2021, 2022 budget. And our budget calendar is on this evening's agenda for the board's review and potential approval. District facility use, this is really important. During the academic day, we are really asking community members to recognize that it, it is impossible, it's a safety and security situation to utilize the district's tracks and fields during the school day. We want to make sure that our children are safe. We want to make sure that we're, we're going to be able to continue to keep our doors open. We want to make sure that there's appropriate separation between the outside world and, and the school, the school day. So we are asking community members to remember that we welcome everybody to use the facilities, but just not during the academic day when children are present. So we thank everyone for that moving forward. Election Day, just a reminder, that's coming up. I don't know if anyone needs a reminder, but Election Day is, it's coming up. And our students will be in full remote learning that day. That's important as well. We'll have more information coming out of, from the building levels as we move forward, just in case there are any additional details. But I will tell you, it's hard to believe we are in October right now. I think back to last October and it seems like it was 1,000 years ago. And you know, we, we have accomplished so much. We definitely, as Mr. Ricky said, we have more to do. We have more to overcome. But there's no doubt in my mind that with this community and everybody working together as we have been, we will be able to continue to move forward and come out on the other side strong. So thanks to everybody and thanks to everybody at home. I see so many teachers who jumped in this evening. Thank you for taking the time to be with us. It really is appreciated. And for moms and dads and guardians that are on as well, thank you also. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Ricka. Thank you. I, I was looking at the, the participants list and I, I saw so many of our staff. And just again, you know, we'll never be able to say how much we appreciate all of our, our staff. It just can't be said enough. And actually I was thinking as well, it's kind of good to see the inside of the high school. So we're going to move right now to the, our summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'm back. Thank you very much. I'd like to draw your attention to Subject B, donations. And we would like to, to thank and, and recognize these very generous donations. Art books from Martha Schaefer for the high school art department. Two digital microscopes and camera systems from Zeiss, Micro, Microscopy, microscopy, I got it, for the high school. And $340 from the Ruth Seigler for music, from Ruth Seigler for Music Faculty Performing Arts Scholarship. Thank you so much for those very generous donations. We're greatly appreciative.
Thank you, Dr. Ricka. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we move to our individual action items. We have the, we have the recommended approval of the revised probationary dates for Emily Martinez, our new high school principal, from September 1st, 2020. From September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2024. The change is, the new date range is September 17th, 2020 through September 16th, 2024. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended suspension of athletic placement, the athletic placement process for the fall 2020 season. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the recommended acceptance of the ESSA 2020 through 2021 Participation Rate Improvement Plan for White Plains Middle School. That's Eastview and Highlands. May I have a motion?
So moved.
The second.
Second.
Do you have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're at board discussion. So now we'll talk about our subcommittee meetings.
Rosemarie, the Special Ed Committee met and I just wanted to highlight two things and I'll let Charlie elaborate on one. We met and we discussed this amazing resource, our tool for teachers that Special Ed Department created within Microsoft Suite to streamline referrals, track benchmarking and goals from month to month and year to year. And I know unveiling anything during a pandemic is, can be challenging. But I'm confident this resource is completely user-friendly. I checked it out last week. And it was created with our families and students in mind. And I'm absolutely confident that the teachers will find time now to focus, you know, more on instruction since a lot of the paperwork will be digital. As well as our partnership with the Andrus Mental Health Facility to provide some counseling and support groups for our staff during this pandemic to help them balance their, their home and work life and any stresses associated, the many stresses, I should say, associated with teaching during a pandemic. And Charlie, I know you had some other words, but.
About the, the one-stop shop?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So what, for, for those of us not in the teaching profession, what the, the directors of Special Ed rolled out under the auspices of Deb Augarten is this incredibly powerful online tool to allow for referrals, to allow for all of our staff to be able to access at their fingertips, the different services and what's available to them to support our kids, to be able to report weekly. And it's all right there for them. If you saw this thing, it was just, it was really, really impressive. And my, my, really my hat's off to them. There was an SEL meeting, so Social Emotional Learning District-wide Committee meeting that, that I sit on. It was a check-in, how we're doing. So we are accessing our staff every day to see how, how they're doing, our students, how they're doing. And Dr. Lutizia mentioned how we are providing through Andrus support for our faculty because these are very difficult times. And everyone's under a lot of stress and strain. And to be able to provide that to our staff is just a wonderful thing. And lastly, there was a curriculum meeting, but I had to leave a little bit early. So I'm going to pass off, but there was a, the, the portion that I attended was a conversation about, you know, how we're doing, about how we're doing in the hybrid model and the remote model and how fine-tuning and, and supporting the teachers and the families as we walk this different kind of world.
Yep, absolutely. And, and also in our curriculum meeting, Dr. Hand did, did take a lot of our questions about the, the composition of classes, the number of students there, the difficulty in really tracking students that are really signed up to be in person, but decide to be remote for a day or so. So there is difficulty, there is some difficulty in tracking that and that's being worked through. But she really fielded just all of our questions because parents have called us with those types of questions. If you have only 10 students here, well, can we fit a couple more? Can someone come off of the remote list and come in? And, and what we've learned is that it's just not as easy as that. Because you could be on, you could have signed up for in class and changed your mind that you want to go remote a little bit, but then say, no, I want to come back in. And really a seat, you know, should be there for what you signed up for. So I think that Dr. Hand is really trying to meet every parent where they are. And I know that every parent is appreciative of that, as we are of Dr. Hand and everything that she does in terms of making our curriculum wheels roll smoothly. I did mention the Youth Bureau and I have to mention them again at this pause. They're, they're such wonderful partners of ours because they service our kids as well. At the last meeting, as I mentioned, they are trying to, to help parents along with childcare. And it's very daunting right now because, you know, childcare. And it's very daunting right now, because, you know, they don't have the spaces in our school presently, because we're trying to, you know, protect our kids as well. So, just want to mention that meeting, that they're very active and still very good partners.
As was already mentioned, the Audit Committee met, and everything that we discussed or much of it was presented here. White Plains RIC also met, and we discussed the opening of the skating rink and how they're going to be doing social distancing. But masks will not be required when people are on the ice but coming into the rink. There won't be any snack bar, and people will not be sitting inside the rink. They talked about doing a three-day drive-in movie for Halloween, where people will be given candy in the cars, but they won't be doing their typical Halloween activities. And this year, really, for the first time, there will be no Christmas tree lighting, nor will there be a New Year's Eve celebration.
Thank you.
I'll just add to the Curriculum Committee meeting, just that the administration is constantly fine-tuning all the work that we're doing and really monitoring everything that's being done to constantly improve. So, it will only get better and better. And I will also mention, having attended the Southern Westchester BOSI's Board Meeting, and just highlight a couple of things. So, career technical education is continuing, and it has successfully opened, and some of our students should be taking advantage of those programs. And the RIC, so the Information Center through Southern Westchester BOSI's, through which we get all our sort of computer equipment and usage and bandwidth, got all the equipment they needed to increase bandwidth. So, if there have been any concerns or issues, that should be improving as well, right? We've doubled our bandwidth, from what I understand.
One thing I didn't get to say, and it's not necessarily specific to school board, but it's regarding COVID-19 and my other world as a doctor. So, despite what people may have heard today, do be afraid of COVID-19. It is a significant virus that has killed more than 210,000 people in this country. So, yes, do be afraid of it. Don't get COVID fatigue. We're all tired of it. Most of us are tired of wearing masks, the season of lots of family activities and Halloween and Thanksgiving and Christmas and Hanukkah and all of the parties that happen. Wear your masks with your families. Remember that you are exposed to everyone that your family has been exposed to. So, much as you want to hug your aunt or your uncle or your grandmother or your cousin, say hi. Don't hug. Flu vaccine. Everybody needs to get vaccinated. We can't really afford to get our emergency rooms overrun with patients with both flu and COVID, and they look the same initially. So, at least, if you get a flu vaccine and you're wearing your masks and washing hands, the chances of getting flu are so much less, and that will be really helpful to the hospitals and all of the medical personnel and your health. That's it from me.
Thank you. All good? All good. So, before we close, just, you know, just to reiterate...
You muted.
Thank you, Dr. Ricker. So, before we close, just to reiterate our sincere thanks to all of you for what you do, and we look forward to just to continue to work together. I would also like to thank John Shepherd and John Misavich for what you do for taping and just making sure all of this goes well. I'd also like to thank Wayne Epstein for making sure that we are set up flawlessly to make this run. So...
Yes, thank you.
We just want to say thank you to you as well. And it's nice to meet you.
I would just like to say, Ron and Marcy is also working here tonight.
I'm sorry, Ron?
Thank you.
Oh, hi, Ron. I'm sorry. What's Ron's last name?
Ron.
Okay. Thank you. Next time, sit up so I can see you.
But not too close.
Yeah, so we thank you. We thank you as well, and also, nice meeting you. So, without further ado, and if there's nothing else, may I have a motion to close our second regular Board of Education meeting in the COVID year?
So moved.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful and safe evening. Thank you.